Yeah, so it'd be real nice to bring those GIS maps out of that thing.
So they don't have to just watch us look at it.
It would be nice if we had three computers where we could just constantly hear.
Yeah.
I'm just talking to you, Red.
There are, there are things.
I'm just starting to trust my county computer in fact.
I mean, there are things that you can do where you can have that to where it can be shared out and you can even just, anybody can bring their computer.
Oh, that's great.
And then share to it and then you can share what's on the screen. That way if you have even like sisters like us.
Are we sharing, are we sharing through Teams or Zoom?
Uh, well today, there isn't sharing that's set up through there, but you guys can do it through Teams.
Gotcha.
So, yeah. I think that that would make the most sense since you guys have Teams across all the sites for both the county and the city.
Alright, David. Do we have laptops available still?
Yes.
I may trade this in for a laptop. This is an iPad.
Alright, everybody rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come together as a group. We ask that you be with us and guide us in all that we do and help us make the right decisions for Bourbon County. We ask this in Jesus' Lord's name. Amen.
Amen.
Alright, so work session.
You're just gonna take it around and over.
Alright, well let's go. Jump right in, both of you.
First and foremost, thank you to Bourbon County, the city of Fort Scott for allowing us to perform an assessment of your, your technology needs. I will say that.
Good start.
Yeah, it says, I mean, the timer's on, sorry.
Okay, you know, the, we've had the opportunity to have Adam and other of our engineers onsite, you know, doing not only just interviews, walking through, looking. We've had the opportunity to run a lot of different tools and so what we're gonna kind of talk through through this work session today is just some of the things that we found. I do want to just kind of let you know that thi- this assessment is just a starting point. And the example I'm gonna give you is that the deeper we dig into things, the probably the more we would continue to find. And that, not in a bad way, think of about like a remodel of a home is you about ready to do something in a room and until you take down the wall, you don't know what's behind that wall. And how much that's going to change the, the scope of the project. And IT's kind of that, that same way is that sometimes we see something on the surface, but we, until we actually can get in, go deeper and then understand why it was set up that way, what the, what are we trying to accomplish? And so, uh, we were encouraged that, uh, we see a lot of positive things here at the county and the city. You know, you guys have made investments in some, some great hardware. You have made some strides. So, um, it really nothing super glaring. Again, I know I mentioned that we can have go when we had a meeting. We have a little more specific things that I wanted to kind of go through with you, um, today. And as I go through this, I have, uh, you're gonna find a lot of overlap of information, both from the county and a city standpoint. Typically because you guys have been sharing resources and it's all kind of done, done the same way at both locations. So, when you hear me kind of talk about it, that's kind of why, uh, it's, there's so many similarities, both at this location and then at the city. You know, uh, as we, you know, went through and, and Adam did a lot of our, our, our conversations, some, some things that I'm gonna just kind of share with you. The document that you have today is more like an executive summary. It's going to highlight some things. But after we are done here, I do have, um, documents, um, we're talking hundreds of pages of data that we have collected. And we will make that available to you, um, in a link where you can go in and you can actually look through all the different reports. I will say that those reports are gonna be very specific to very specific things. So, um, you might want to have caution on what, what you share and what you don't share. If you have any questions on, is this a public consumption document or not, feel free to reach out to Stronghold Data and we can, we can let you know. But a lot of those things are, you know, kind of, uh, very intimate into like what, what you have. So, you know, really this overview that we looked at, you know, through our conversations, through the tools we deployed, we had a, a wide range of things we were looking at, um, from the hardware you used, the software you used.
Turn your fan off. Sorry.
Well, turn it down.
Sounds like a windmill. That's what I'm told.
So, just at a high level, this is again, including the city and the county, some, some key, key findings. Just number one, you have a high volume of inactive devices. Um, and what that means is, uh, these are devices that were, were taking off, um, out of production, if you will, where there's a user actively using those machines, but there were some backend maintenance and housekeeping kind of things that needed to be done with those devices. So again, this is the first of many times you're gonna hear me kind of use that analogy of housekeeping or maintenance. What, what we have found and even in the conversation we had is you had, um, a lot of reactive work going on here at the county, not a lot of proactive. One example I will say that we heard over and over and over that both the city and the county, as we were talking to folks is your IT team, um, had the cell numbers, uh, their person, whatever cellphone they were using and people would call them and they'd be right there. So, great for them, great, you know, end user. The problem was is when you're busy putting out fires, you're not really doing a lot of, it takes away from the time that you have to do, you know, proactive. And that maintenance and healthcare and all of those things, um, you, we can see, you know, that was part of the neglect, um, that we saw. So, high volume of inactive devices, you do still have some unsupported software that is in your environment. And, you know, that's along lines of Microsoft operating systems, uh, which also includes some, uh, critical patching that needs to be done. All of these things so far, again, is nothing that's, uh, a very expensive fix. Again, it's just time to go in there and, and clean, and do a lot of cleanup. Some password practices that you had, if you've had some, uh, you've had some users that have had their passwords to never expire. And so, uh, while that's easy for your users, you know, that's a convenience thing, you know, we all wish our passwords didn't expire because that means we don't have to remember a new one. The problem is, is, um, and this is just across the entire human nature. A human is, is we're going to create passwords that we hope that we can remember. And typically, you can boil down your, your password to about seven different password variations. And so when you have a password that never sets to expire, if you're reusing that password somewhere else, which typically we do, both at home and at work, you think about it in your own personal lives, I've been guilty of it myself, those passwords get compromised. If I'm a bad person, I can take that password and I can automatically just see where that password gets me logged into. And that's something that's very automatic. I hit, I hit enter and it's just gonna go and try to guess that password until it sees if I get logged in somewhere. And so, that, that's why this password practice is, um, you have to have a password policy in place. And that password policy not only needs to be in some sort of written format, but it all, you know, like along with your other policies and procedures, but it also needs to be enforced at a technical level. So, think about this in your personal life, when you go to log into anything, it's gonna tell you, you need the minimum of eight characters. It needs to have a capital letter, it needs to have, you know, whatever it may be. And we're seeing that the eight characters are going to, you know, get longer. Because at one point, it used to be four characters, you know, now we're typically the, the one is eight, you're gonna start seeing where they go longer. And to, to help alleviate those problems, that's where the advent of tools called password managers, you know, really come out. And so, now you as a human only have to remember one, but the password manager allows you to set secure, longer passwords for, for everything. So, password policy was one that, um, we could definitely see improvement in where you have those set to never expire. In fact, you've had some users that's never logged in over thirty days. We kind of mentioned this at the, um, the last meeting we had. If someone's not logging in over thirty days, what happens is, is that gives the ability for, uh, a cyber attack to take place on these inactive accounts. And you would never, you know, they're gonna try to get in and you wouldn't know because it looks like everything within your system goes, okay, it's just a user that's on there. So, having these cleanup, this maintenance is if you see somebody that's not logging over thirty days, then that need requires some, do we need to, are they no longer employed here? Maybe they're on extended leave, you know, we see a lot of that with the military. If you have people that are, you know, serving overseas or something and they have a leave of absence. There, there could be many medical reasons, you know, there could be many reasons they don't log in for, for over thirty days, but it's just a reason for them to, to look at that. Again, the missing path, past patches. So, um, a lot of times you're going to have machines that automatically try to update it. So, think about your cell phones right now. Every so often, you're gonna get this like, hey, turn your phone off because we have to do, you know, updates. And it finally gets to a point where it forces you to do those updates, right? You have no choice. It's just, it's going to do it in the middle of the night while you're asleep. Well, that's one way to handle it, but when you force patches like that, you don't know if it's gonna break something. And I think we had an example of that where there was a forced Windows, um, patch, I think it was here at the county.
Yeah, payroll office.
And that patch broke something. And, and so that was one of the most recent things. And so, really having a patching policy in place where you have a, where you're actively making these maintenance things, but you create windows where you can do that, but you can also test those patches to see if it's going to break things. And if you do have it, then you roll it back, fix it, and then you, you move forward. But having just a, a, a hard forcing of that, not only does it create problems, but here's another thing, is sometimes those patches don't take. Right? And so you have to monitor which patches are, are going through and which patches aren't. Because those that don't go through, you need to go back and then figure out why they didn't go through. A lot of times, think of it as a ladder. You have a patch that down here and if this patch didn't take and you don't know that it didn't take, every subsequent patch could not be applied and it just skips over them. And that's how sometimes you, you get behind. So, again, this, this is just another example, what I was saying is this, there's a lot of maintenance stuff that needs to be, to be cleaned up. And really, this isn't a large like hardware investment, you know, from the county and city perspective, it's just more of a labor kind of.
When do you guys normally push patches?
It depends on what those are, but, uh, you know, from a Microsoft standpoint, you know, Microsoft always like Patch Tuesday. We typically will, will set that after that so we can test it if we haven't done so before.
So it's usually done like after hours?
Yeah, a lot of times we do all of ours after hours.
Also, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So it's just merely setting up something, Michael, Commissioner Marburg, where they leave their computer on at their desk?
Okay.
And that way, the patches come automatically.
Need it turned on so it can do it.
Yeah. Don't shut down your computer. At the end of the day, leave it on. You can pull your card, lock it, and then the system will push it.
Wonderful.
Or, you know, like, if someone does, you know, turn their computer off at night, when they come in the morning, it's gonna automatically try to, so.
Does it give them the option to ignore or can you not give them the option to ignore?
Typically not. Uh, a- again, it comes down, because it's not just the Microsoft that requires patches. Think about every time you use Google, okay? Google is a web browser and you have to make sure any web browser that you use is also patched. So that's the same for hardware and software. And so, every computer that has all of these on, you've got to be eyes on, like, are they on the most updated patch of that software version that they're using? Now, for instance, um, you know, the, the software incident where you had a certain software that required certain hardware to match.
Yeah.
You need to make sure that the software version you're on is supported by Microsoft. It's just, it's one of those very, you know, uh, you have to have eyes on it. Because there's not a, if there was a silver bullet for patch management, everybody would be using that silver bullet. But right now, it's not. It's, we can streamline the Microsoft stuff because that's pretty unique. But you need to have, you have to have an understanding of how Microsoft patches is impacting maybe your CIC that you're using or some of your other, the other things that you're using, you know, around the city. So, again, it's not a, it's not a big thing. It's just, we, we see some of that maintenance being neglected, um, on, on that end. We've already covered about the password, you know, um, piece on the practices and policies. There's some external vulnerabilities that, um, we're going to talk about. Um, and those are probably things that if we, um, if we get into details, that would definitely be something I would recommend is not shared, um, is not for public consumption because it gives you an idea of how they, um, could potentially get in. So, these external vulnerabilities, there are some that are critical, um, and that could expose your network to outside, outside attacks. Now, again, this is not something that is like unique to Bourbon County or the city of Fort Scott. Every organization that's using technology, you know, it changes on a daily basis. And so, these, this criminal element, they find new ways all the time and you have to just go in there and it's a cat and mouse game all the time. So I don't want to, I don't want there to be any misconception that it's not malicious or anything like that, uh, that we're seeing currently. It is just, again, when those vulnerabilities come up, action needs to be taken on those. And there needs to be some policies and procedures that you have in place to make sure that the county and the city are protected. The last one, again, kind of comes back to policies. And when we talk policies, it's just not like your HR policy handbook, but it's like technical policies. And when I say technical policies is like, um, screen lock. You know, some computers had a screen lock on them, some didn't. And what I mean by screen locking, you've all seen it, is if you're sitting at work and then you get up to go get a cup of coffee, you come back, your screen's automatically locked out. If you're in a banking environment, you know, or in, in the medical industry, you know, they're training them to, you know, lock their screen the minute they turn around and walk away. Just because you don't want people to come back in. We always joke at, at, you know, at Stronghold Data, we have new hires that come in and, you know, we have a very strict policy that if you leave your screen up and you walk away from it, people will send out messages that you're bringing donuts the next day, right?
From your screen.
So, um, it, it's, um, you can set those screens, you know, you can make it very aggressive that, but it makes it really hard for your employees to work. So, having a written policy, but also something forced at, at a technical level. And sometimes that's like, hey, if you're not using your computer after five minutes, it's gonna automatically lock out. Maybe it's ten minutes, maybe it's fifteen. I can't tell you what that is and we need to look at the job. But we're seeing those inconsistencies across the board of both the, the city and county. So that screen lock, the account lock, same way with like wifi protocols. You know, there's just a lot of these policies that just need to come in and bring more co- cohesivity and following of industry standards when it comes to, to these different things. Again, um, just, it, it's a labor intensive kind of thing to, to make sure that you have that going on.
None of these computers are activated through CAC, are they?
Not that I'm aware of. Do you?
You haven't come across one? Okay. So the county doesn't use CAC?
No, sir. Not that I, not to any of the things that came up in our scans.
CAC is computer access cards. You have to put a credit card, it looks like a credit card with a chip to get into your computer.
Okay.
You know, and, um, there's other security protocols that we're gonna kind of go through, um, that I'm gonna, you know, talk about, um, as, as we get into the report. These are just some high level I wanted to kind of talk to first because I think it'll level set as I actually start showing you the examples that are in the report. From your Microsoft 365, there's a lot of work that, that needs to be done, um, in, in this area. Like we need to turn on some anti-phishing, anti-spam policies. It's kind of inconsistent. You know, I mean, some have it, some don't, but we need to make sure that that's fully enforced. There's also some impersonation protections that can be implemented, mail forwarding protections, attachment filtering. We see attachment filtering and, you know, that's one way the attackers are coming in as though, like, let's say HR. You know, like HR's a big one to pick on. It's someone who will be like, hey, I'm applying for this job, but that, that resume that's in there has malicious links and stuff in that. And so when your HR person clicks on it, it infects that machine. So, there's some tools that Microsoft makes, you know.
All you have to do is click on it? You don't even have to download it? You just click on it?
It depends. I mean, sometimes, yes, you gotta click on it, sometimes you gotta download it. But it depends on the sophistication of the person that, that you're dealing with. I mean, there's technology out there, it's not employed a lot, but there's technology out there. I can send you a text message to your phone, and since your phone receives it, your phone's infected. I mean, there's all kinds of levels. It's just that, you know, we're not seeing that level sophisticated. That, that's safe for more like nation to nation, you know, kind of attacks because it's, it's very, very difficult. So, yes, sometimes just opening attachment can impact that machine.
Can you, um, I'm asking this for your, can you set up, um, anti-phishing scenarios?
Oh, absolutely. Um, you know, there's lots of companies out there, probably the Cadillac of anti-phishing is called No Before. That's at the top level. There's all sorts underneath that. We actually use one that will simulate a, a phishing attack and we send it out. We love doing it. In fact, I, if the sheriff was here, if Bill was here, I'd, I'd share a story is we sent out a phishing email to a sheriff's department and he had nineteen deputies at this particular location not only clicked on the link, which can infect your computer or downloading link, but I had nineteen of them give me their login credentials because I fooled them into.
What, what that is, Commissioner Marburg, is they send you an email that looks very legit.
Yeah.
And you do everything that this email asks you to do. And when you send it, and what ends up, the reason I like it is because we use it and it's got me once.
Well, if anybody wants to send me anything, just write it in the memo. I just won't open them.
It wants you to open it.
Well, I know, but if you just write it in the memo, Brad, because I won't open any of your emails from now on. So, just put it in the memo memo, I'm not getting it.
You gotta tell everything that you didn't know in the subject line.
What I'm getting at is when, when your employees click on it, then you know immediately that that employee needs remedial training.
Oh.
We did it a month, we did it a month ago or about a month and a half ago, we did it at City Hall. Did really well, actually. Did really well.
The thing are, with artificial intelligence now, it's getting harder and harder to spot phishing emails. I mean, everyone can spot the, the, the low level ones.
Yeah.
But if you become a target in your personal or professional lives with artificial intelligence, pretty much even I would probably click on them. You know, so, yes, Sam, training helps tremendously. We recommend maybe doing a phishing test about once a quarter. And then those that click on the link, maybe offer some web-based training. Now, we are a little bit different is we come, we like coming in once a year and doing face-to-face phishing. And we give examples. We can even like put the results of like the last four quarters of, of phishing test. And there's no better way to get buy-in from, from employees when you show them like what happened at Wichita State University. I don't know if you heard this about four or five years ago, where someone clicked on it and they diverted the payroll, payroll. So, you just ask your employees, I mean, you want to divert your payroll over a phishing, you know, typically it gets their attention. But the, the in-person training, really, we feel that it goes a lot further. But yes, if you're going after cyber liability insurance or any of those kinds of things, they're gonna tell you that you have to do those kinds of things. So, but under the Microsoft itself, that, just the whole tenant thing, there's a lot of things that you could be leveraging, not only from a security perspective, but also a efficiency perspective from a county and, and city, uh, to go through there. Your score though on that where, um, when we're looking at that Microsoft cloud section, you're at an eight point two of your profile. So, basically what that's telling me is there's a lot of gaps in that cloud security practice. And again, it's just going in and, and, and doing some of just minor things. You already are paying for the license, you've already invested, you, you guys, I mean, we've seen where the county and city's done some great jobs on, on the investment that they have. It's just underutilized where we just need to go in there and, and make sure. So, that's on that. The, um, um, external vulnerabilities that I was talking about, again, this is gonna come, there's some routers that you have, Brad, at the, at the city, um, that was trying to connect back here to the, the Palo Altos, you know, those routers. Those, there's some Opera OS, you know, that are, are some things in there that we could, could look at. So, um, those are some of the things when, what we're talking about. So, really, just as we, before we dive into this report, I mean, again, um, this just comes down, a lot of your risk could be mitigated by, uh, some, some health checks, some proper maintenance, um, from a risk standpoint. Now, your users and the interviews we did, they did complain about, you know, slow internet and, and, and stuff like that. That is gonna come back to the whole, and we've been talking about this, about segmenting the county and the city.
Yeah.
And really setting you, um, up to leverage modern, some modern, you know, um, technology.
Jason, I don't know why it was so slow though, because that paper that Adam gave us said we were running like a four hundred or something.
Yeah, so that is going to show the circuit that's coming in. And this is kind of some of the stuff that he's talking about too, of like kind of just the maintenance and cleaning up some of the things. Because without getting like super technical about it, the circuit that you have coming in, which is the primary from Crockett, is the four hundred and four hundred that you see. Every time that, so think of it like a pie almost, right? Like you get a piece of the pie. Every time we send it to another building, so like we send something to Public Works or whatever, you take a slice of the pie.
Oh.
And then you move over to another access point or another switch or you put this over here, we have something that sits over in the city, you take another slice of the pie and another slice of the pie. So by the time it gets out to the actual users that are using it on the computer, they're only getting fifty down.
Oh.
And, or they may not even have internet connectivity at all, you know.
Yeah.
Um, or things like too, like in our interviews, you know, typically, you know, we see things like, um, like, for example, like, uh, like the, um, or the accounting office over here. You know, they would, typically what we would see is all of those devices would be pl- plugged into an aggregation switch. You know, a main distribution switch that we have upstairs, like one of the big ones, it's like in the server room. Well, there, some computers were on wireless, some were plugged into a little unmanaged switch that's in there, which isn't, when I say unmanaged, it just means that we can't remote into it. We can't make changes on it. But there's a mix of, you know, some of that stuff that was just making internet work, not the optimization component of making it optimized for getting the switches.
So you can take things and move them around and make everything faster and more efficient.
So a lot of the computers were not in docking stations?
No, 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 that's correct. Yeah. Most of the computers that we saw were utilizing wifi connectivity for their internet.
And that makes it slow.
Yes. The second that you use wireless, your throughput and like what you see on your speed test is going to be the throughput that's coming directly to the router. The second it goes on wireless, you're gonna have some level of degradation.
Ah, gotcha. Okay.
Just to add is like, you know, not only going from one building to another building, but if you, you know, and this is not uncommon, but you know, you think about a building, you, you move in and all of a sudden you're like, man, I wish I had a jack here because I could put something here. Well, instead of rewiring the whole building for one, you know, you just put in one of those little jumper boxes, right? You know, a little four-port switch or something. Well, that little four-port switch can only handle so much through it. So think of about it like a choke point. Well, you eventually get to a point where you have multiple of those in all these different offices. I mean, I got, I went into a county one time and for, they have four of those four-port switches to get to another where they add it on rather than just running a, you know, doing it the right way that, and so, you get to a point where you sometimes just gotta burn it all down and then, and then, and then rewire it right and.
Basically, what you're telling me is we got a fire hose and we choked it down to a garden hose, expecting it to perform like a fire hose.
Great example, Sam, great example. Yep. And now that's not for everybody, it just depends on where you're at along that fire hose, right? So, um, some, some people have better experiences. And then, again, you can go back and not only optimize how that wifi is flowing, but you also want to look on each individual devices. You know, there's, there's times I've done some walkthroughs and I walk in and I see somebody that has, and you know, the, what I'm talking about is they have hundreds of tabs open.
Ah, I like tabs. Yeah.
And, and so, where you have all those, you have all those tabs open, you also potentially think about like all the software that could be running in the background. And so each one of those things has to do updates and stuff like, you know, we've seen like antivirus sometimes really slow down machines. And so, really what you have to do is you have to look at not only the hardware, but how is that device getting the internet? And how can you optimize it? And you can do that a lot, coming back to like having some certain standards. Um, and that's kind of like one of the things that you're, you, I was about ready to kind of, as I move into it, and this is the report that I gave you. I'm gonna kind of jump into it.
Okay.
And we're gonna start on this first page.
Let me, Jason, so that I don't catch anything off guard. It's four fifty-seven, we have a meeting that starts at five thirty, so at like four, uh, five twenty-five, five twenty, five twenty-five, I'm gonna stop this stream and then we'll restart it as a meeting and we'll just put you on the agenda and we can finish there.
Okay.
Is that okay?
I, I.
And we have an executive session in that meeting also.
If, if, you know, if you have questions, feel free to ask me, but I can, you know, I'm gonna point out some stuff. I think that really the goal today is I'm gonna let you digest this.
Okay.
Um, and then I want to open up questions, not only tonight, but, you know, down the road. Because I'm sure Brad and the city are gonna have different questions than, than the county has. Because even though we see a lot of the same things, just because, um, you know, you're, you're leveraging. So, you should see this remediation timeline is typically page one in your report. What we did here is we kind of broke this down, um, what we would, you know, have you look at as a county and city, and they almost mirror each other exactly. Okay? Talking about going through a segmentation project, you know, where you're making the county separate from the city, that project there would solve a lot of problems. I mean, just number one. And it'd solve a lot of problems on this timeline that you have. But as you're going down through this, there's really nothing in here that, um, I, 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 I don't think that there's anything in here that you couldn't share that we haven't talked about if anyone asked. The, um, the second line on where it says, begin structured cleanup of hazardous or unorganized network or server closets. The hazardous isn't so much like hazardous waste, I don't want you to think. But like somewheres, the, the, Adam was talking, they're on the third floor, um, you have some IT equipment that is near water. So that water would be hazardous, you know, water and IT do not mix.
Is that the bathroom?
Yeah, right over by the bathroom.
The maintenance bathroom.
That's correct.
Is it linking or something?
No. No, what happened was whoever, whoever in the past went in there, when I was running the building, the last Thursday, I saw it. So they got like, looks like a router, the routing equipment in there, and it's in basically a pipe chase where all the plumbing comes out of it. And that's not, that's not a good thing.
If you have a broken pipe there in the winter and it squirts water everywhere, it's gonna, you know, it's just, that's a hazard to that. And so like as you go and you start looking at a segmentation project, that's those, those are the kinds of conversations that you wanna get in. It's like, if we're gonna do this, then how can we, you know, make it, you know, protect, you know, a lot of those different things? So I wanted to kind of point that out, and that's in the months one through three. In months four through six, um, that, you know, when I say review and remediate point-to-point wireless links, you know, that's gonna include what we're talking about there is your parks and city. We see, um, um, at the city anyways, for, for the city one. For the, for the county, you have some point-to-point connections at Public Works, you know, that we, that we would. So even though that that line item is kind of high level, cause I want it to be high level in this document, we can talk about what that, we can break that down in separate conversations on what does this actually mean as you start really strategizing what would make the most sense for the county versus the city on remediating these timelines. So if we wanna go to the next page, um, you're gonna see, this is kind of like an executive summary as we go down through it. Brad on yours, um, there on the right-hand side, um, that zero dollar that's there, that is inaccurate because we're still compiling some of the reports.
He got me a preliminary number, but it's not complete yet. It was, uh, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, six hundred and sixty-two.
I have one for Brad and I have one for, for the county. So I'm trying to cover both. The reason I'm telling that is, um, just in full transparency, um, we were, we just got some access, um, to, to the systems we needed from Brad on Friday afternoon. And so we're still trying to wrap that number up. I'm just pointing that out because I don't want that. Your number is the four, four point five.
So that's a lot, that's, that's.
So here's, the reason why I'm pointing this out is the tools that go through here, it's looking at should the county experience a cyber incident? This is potentially your liability based on what we see. So, two things you gotta understand. Number one, in these numbers, there's not, they, it doesn't take into account duplication. So what I mean by that is let's say if I were to have access to your systems, I can see all of your payroll. Well, if you pay on a monthly, bi-monthly, bi-weekly, I don't know how you do your payroll, but imagine that that report's in there multiple times. And so if I'm accessing social security numbers, um, and I wanna go sell that, that's what this is telling me, or any other PII personally identifiable information, or PHI personal health information, cause you do collect that. They're trying to look at the records that you have, and this is what you could expect. So, that, that number could be and probably would be lower in the event, but this gives you a good idea if you're going to secure cyber liability insurance about how much you might wanna take into account. So for both the county and the city, the areas that, um, county you have, um, in red, so you can see the software, the security passwords, the Microsoft cloud, um, the county, your teams is, was a little bit better than what the city had, had set up. So, flipping over.
The score, the score is based off of what?
You're about ready to see on all, all these different, all these different sections, it's kind of compiled the scores in.
Is, is the number, I guess what I'm asking, is that number good or is that number bad?
It's pretty high.
It's pretty high. So the lower number is better off?
Yeah, it's kind of like gold. We want a lower number, not a higher number.
Four thousand something?
Uh, yeah, you guys were pretty much the same. I'm skipping to this page where it talks about the executives number under cyber risk assessment. This, this is some information I'm gonna just talk about, but as you flip through these pages, you're going to see that, um, the information contained in here, if I were wanting to attack the county or the city, I could leverage this data and probably make it my job a little bit easier. So I would definitely, um, say that this, this information needs to kind of stay within, um, those, those guidelines. But you can see at this high-level report, you can see where we found, so, um, under the system configurations, the city had five different areas, the county had six. There's two, both applications had some, um, instances. At the county level, uh, your endpoint protection, there's one area that we found. So you can, I don't need to read that, you can kind of see what you have. On the next page, it explains exactly what those assessments are, and I'm not gonna talk about that, I'm gonna let you read that. But like, um, it, you know, it highlights which machine does not have antivirus on there. So again, this is like through the, if you had that regular maintenance going on, it's on.
It's on page seven.
Right here. So, you know, thi- this is something that you should have regular maintenance on, and these kinds of things are gonna pop up. And then it may require a reboot of the machine, it may require a reinstall of that. But these are things that you have to be very proactive, is what we're talking about, you know, on those things. So you can kind of see some of the, the, um, the things that we have. Now, I do wanna say that, um, Brad, um, yours had some, uh, some of the patching. Those are where some of the critical items were at that needs to be done. And if you flip over to the next page, under the same findings, you can continue to see, um, some of the external threats passing in, um, in system configurations. Again, under this particular assessment that you're seeing here in front of you, it's not a big investment. It's again, it's time. It really is time coming in and, and going through and, and fixing these. Not to, to spend a lot of, of time on these. I am going to flip, in, in, in here, when you get to, Brad, when you get to like this page, this is page eleven on yours, and it should be page, you can look at page ten and eleven on the counties. If you look over on the right, this is what I wanna point out, if you look over on the right, you know, Brad, yours on page, um, eleven has six computers. On page ten, for the county, you're seeing, you know, there was twenty-one computers in the red. You know, those are the actual machines that have those threats. That's why I'm not gonna read through those machines. And that, that's the kind of information that you should not share. Because we know exactly what machines, and this would be very easy for somebody if they wanted to.
Why is it not supported though? Why is it?
On, on, are you reading on page ten, where it says using unsupported software version of Microsoft?
No, why is it not supported?
Well, why is it not supported is that there's age, Microsoft, like any software says, hey, this is so old that we're no longer gonna support it and we're no longer gonna issue patches for it?
We gotta pay for it yearly though, so it's always.
Well, back in the day, you would buy certain software when you bought the machine. Okay, the newer version that Microsoft is going to is a subscription-based, and once you go under that one, then it's gonna continue to. So there's two different flavors. This is talking about the flavors that have that, that needs to be updated.
Oh, man, what I'm hearing you guys tell me is we have an amalgam of various different machines and software.
Yes, you have, there needs to be a clear standardization for both the county and the city, would benefit from that.
So, did you find, did you find any of these PCs that were refurbished? Cause I heard, I heard that the county had purchased refurbished computers. And that's like, that, the minute, the immedi- immediately when I heard that in my head, I was like, we don't buy refurbished anything because you don't know how clean those are.
There was nothing to indicate, um, as far as like any like invoices or anything that I looked at showed me that yes, for certain, this is a refurbished computer. What I can tell you is, is that computers that, um, were considered to be new devices, the age of them did not match a new device.
So I'm, that statement that provides me is vindicated. Yeah, that's not a good thing.
Being in the public sector, so both county and city, you should be buying, um, hardware that has manufacturer support on it. But really, that's important when it comes to your police department, when it comes to your sheriff's department. They need to buy hardware that follows a chain of custody, so that way you know, um, where that's at. And so buying from, whether that's a Dell vendor, Micro, uh, HP, Lenovo, I mean, those are all supported, and you should be buying directly, yeah, I mean, obviously you have a distributor involved, but you're, they're coming straight from the manufacturer too.
I would say nine-one dispatch same way.
Yep, yep, yep.
For us, I'd say anybody has to do anything with PII, PHI, pay, those computers need to be.
I wanna kind of circle back to your concern, Micah. It's not uncommon for us to see, so I'm gonna pick on manufacturing as a totally different sector, is we'll see manufacturers that are running hardware and software that are thirty or forty years old. And the reason why is they can't go invest in a new CNC machine that's multi-millions. And so that machine has to run on that software to make it work, right? So, the reason why I'm giving you this example is when we understand the reason or the why, what we can then do is like if there's a, in this example, if there's a reason that you run a Windows seven machine because of the CNC machine, we need to make sure that that's segmented and it's protected as much as we can, okay? In these instances, what I'm seeing is like, um, we would need to understand the why.
Yeah, like why are, why we got really old computers there?
Well, again, what we're seeing is that there's some, there's a lot of these computers being reported, but I don't think that they're actually in use. I just don't think that they've ever been cleaned up fully through your routers, through your, your. And again, it's just, it's a, it's a labor instance. If we got in and we saw that somebody was still running on a very outdated level, then that would be like, hey, that's, that is where you get in the proactive side of having somebody that is doing like some sort of planning where you're like, hey, this year we need to budget for fifteen or twenty new machines, and then next year we're gonna do another fifteen or twenty. And you get on what is called a life cycle habit, and then you're doing that, not only does it make it easier for the county and city to budget, but you're also, you know, on regular maintenance of that hardware. Then, then it becomes like disposal, you know? So a lot of our public sector entities, this is where they're looking at potentially leasing hardware, because then they don't have to go through. It becomes automatic, and then that number becomes more consistent, so it makes budgeting easier. Uh, we're seeing also that, uh, more and more, uh, often than not, is that people are going through and creating what is called, you know, a technology cost. So each employee comes with a technology cost, and for you and the leadership of, of your, um, your entities, um, you can look at as like, hey, as we bring on employee, you already know what the benefit cost is gonna be, you know, the tax cost is gonna be. You really should also understand in that role that you're hiring for, what the technology cost is. Cause there's a direct cost as you bring on employees for the, for the hardware, the email, all of those different things. And so through that life cycle management, you can get those technology costs, you can get that to where you can better prepare, you know, for those changes. So as I am flipping through this, if you see those where it shows the computers, the users impacted, this is definitely information that should not be, um, probably, because right now, if I'm looking at this and I knew that this particular was using, um, had a failed patch on them, then I could exploit that, that failed patch.
To clear the, sorry, to clear, to clear these two findings. Is this a project on, on page, for us, it's page ten and eleven?
Page ten, eleven? This, this right here wouldn't even really be considered a project. So that's a great question, Sam. So, um, I know that you are gonna be, you know, looking at, at a provider, um, in the future. So when you're doing that, these are some of the things that I would put in the, your request for either questions or a request for proposal. This is cleanup. Okay, this can be done very, very easy as you're going through a, a cleanup phase. I would just make sure you call that out.
Why would you say that we haven't done that? Why, why, if it's so easy, why do we have them on there?
That's why I started off saying is I think you had some great folks that were very responsive and they were on, under full reactive. Okay, you know, um, all of your employees told Adam in their interviews is that they would call, you know, the IT and they would be right there. They'd be right there helping them. Nothing wrong with that, but if you're always operating out of a reactive mode, it reduces the amount of time that you have to plan to do a lot of these things here.
And when we also see, just to add to that, when we see things like some of like the network closets, you know, just kind of being kind of disorganized or things like, um, old devices that haven't been cleared out of the routing tables or cleared out of like the server settings, what that, what we typically associate that with is we built the new stuff, but we never went back and cleaned up the old stuff kind of thing. So it kind of lends itself to that reactive versus proactive, if that makes sense, so.
I'm gonna kind of skip forward and we're gonna go to the page itself, health report like this right here. Cause there's plenty of information that you can go through this and really take a, a deeper look at it. But it's going to give you an idea of your overall health score. And as you start going down through this, if you flip over that, that next one, it identifies the high-risk areas, it identifies the low-risk areas. It tells you, um, again, kind of going back to the Microsoft Office version, Sam, that you were asking about. It talks about it here, tells you the number of, that's infected. I am not going to read that. You know, through here, this is, I'm just wanting you guys to see what this is. So like, um, you, you see that it's kind of like, on one page you have a number affected on one is twenty-one. You know, another one's six, you know, for you. You know, at the, at the city level, you have five on one and one on another. It's just a lot of inconsistencies, like again, that, you know, need to go back in and really, you know, start working on, on these. And it's nothing that I haven't already kind of shared, that's why we're, we're kind of talking about it. But if you flip over to the next page on the right-hand side, it kind of gives you an additional breakdown of the Microsoft patching. So to your point, Micah, what you're asking, Sam, um, like we can see like, um, I, I don't understand, you know, this, for the, you know, the city, what you see under the data center one, the twenty-sixteen version, that, you know, we would wanna definitely take a deeper look into that. For, for the county, you have, uh, some other versions of operating systems that we would wanna, we would definitely wanna look at. But it, it goes through and it breaks us down, and those are on active devices.
These are all active.
Those are the ones under active. We can see the ones that are inactive if you look under all computers. You can kind of see where, you know, some of those are at. There's still lingering some Windows seven, um, some Windows XP at the city. So you can actually see all the different acts, um, different items.
Well, we got some old systems in here.
Yep. And, and Sam, I think a lot of that is.
We got some old systems in there.
Uh, again, I think it's some of the information still just, I don't think it's in production. I don't think it's being used. We're not seeing any sign that it's being used. There's, there's just, i- it's like, um, you put a new roof on your house. They've cleaned everything up, but you still walk through the yard and you find a nail in there. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
So it's just that last little bit of fine-tune cleaning where you run the magnet over your yard and you're picking up the magnets. Or the, the nails, right? Or, you know, you're seeing some stuff kind of wash down the gutters that just needs to be, you know, kind of cleaned out from, from that. So, again, it's just.
It's housekeeping, is what you're telling me.
Yeah, yeah, um, so if you can see, you know, you can flip over to this page here, Brad, I'm on this one, this, this data liability. Basically, your, your reports needs to be updated, Brad. That's what we're working on, so I will make sure I get that to you. But for the county in your book, you can kind of see that, that liability. And so really what that number, the, on the left-hand side, under that four point five number down below says total count of sensitive data, there was nineteen thousand different cases. Again, I'm gonna tell you that my experience leads me to believe that there's a lot of duplication in there. So that's gonna impact the number that's above it. But what this also is highlighting is that there's certain data that needs to be encrypted at the, at the county level. So you, when you're dealing with encryption, and we saw some of it in your other report where it talks about encryption, there's one thing to have encryption of your data when you're emailing data out, that's data in motion. It's another w- way to have data that's encrypted at rest. And so any, this is that data that's resting on your hardware that needs to be encrypted and, and protected. And in that box, um, at, on the, on that page there, you can see some of the most impacted, and those is where we would start first. Okay, and so again, it's identifying those machines where that data resides.
You said machines, plural. I'm looking, I'm looking at the. I'm looking, I'm looking at the red block, most impacted, num, uh, first, 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 uh,
Right here.
First item? Yes, sir. Was that one machine or?
That would be one machine.
That one machine?
Yep, those first two, that'd be the first two I'd start with.
It just has numbers and letters.
Yeah, it identifies where it's at.
This is what you're looking at right here? Yeah, that is the default naming convention for the computer, so it was never
Named?
It was never named.
Oh.
Yeah, that's what, that's the name of it, that it'll come, like, when it comes out of the box.
Oh, but you know
But just
We know exactly where, yeah.
So you know where it's at? All right, good, because my thing is look at the number that's beside it, that is ridiculous.
Yeah.
So, again, please, don't, let's not get just hung up on the number. I mean, it is highlighting it, an issue that needs to be addressed. But that's why that, that this is kind of, it's going to count each, every one. So if you have duplication times a hundred, you know, that's gonna sit there and take it. But if I'm, if I'm the bad guy that's extracting that information, I'm only selling one.
You know, I get it, what I'm saying is that those two machines in comparison to the rest is exponentially higher.
And that, that's not uncommon, is, cause typically it's, when, when we discuss what the job role was and what it was for, um, we see that a lot. I mean, you know, cause you always have machines that are doing a lot of different things than what other machines are. So, not uncommon, it's just, that is why, you know, having some really good policies in place, like encrypting that data, no matter if that data resides there, it probably should reside there, it's just that if I were to get into it, I can't do anything with encrypted data. Unless I'm, you know, investing in some of these newer, um, so, um, really, I'm gonna, in essence of time, is I'm gonna go to this where it says consolidated management plan.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're gonna skip over to that, and right here, if, uh, you, this is, starting on, on this page, this would be an excellent spot if you really wanted to start impacting your overall risk score, so going back to what you were asking us on like how we came up with that numbers. You can see how each one of these things, how we attributed numbers to that risk score.
Gotcha.
And you can start seeing how we eliminate that risk, and it's done pretty easy. Now, um, as you flip through all of these, you know, we have it where one's under your network, one's under your security management plan. Um, you have the Microsoft, you know, plans that's in here. There's just a lot of different things, and Brad, you know, yours is the same ways. Where you start looking through this, I am looking, um, under like this page here. Those are the list of the machines, so I definitely would not want, same way with the, you know, the county one, where it's, you know, listing each individual workstation on, on where we're at. But it has the different risk for the Microsoft cloud, um, and, and on there. So, that is, uh, leaves you eight minutes, or six minutes, if you wanna ask me a question.
Okay.
Please, dude, I can dive into deeper, it's just I, I really can't go, I really don't wanna go into depth on what I just showed you, because now we're gonna start talking about specific items.
I would
Can we, do you wanna stick around for the executive session? We have you on the meeting for executive session, that we can do that for.
Sure.
Um, so, uh,
But you, I mean, I, I wanted you to see kinda the information we, we have available. So this is just a high-level one, just for us to talk, you know, kinda we call it the executive summary.
Number one for me is the project to separate us from the city. Did you run a quote on that?
I, we are still building up that statement of work for you.
Okay.
Um, we're waiting on the, the report of the, the city. We need that to, to finish up, so we can kinda finalize that.
Okay.
But honestly, um, you know, I, I, I wanna stress again that you guys have done some great things, some great